Recording in progress.
We'll call the order, the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, February 27th, 2024. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located in the north wall of the legislative chambers and also that an automatic external defibrillator is available on the back wall of the chamber as well. Please stand for the pledge. We'll commence with our Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business is Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, and also Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of amended property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Do I have a motion, a second?
So moved.
Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to our resolutions. We have Resolutions C through H today. Before I ask for a motion, was there anybody that came here to speak on any of these resolutions, C through H? If not, I'll ask for a motion, which could include adjournment? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. We're now going to jump into our Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item is the approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. Do I have a motion, a second?
So moved.
Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next item of business is report from the Director of Corrections with Director Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have before you my board report for the month of January. Enclosure number one, administrative services. At the halfway point of the fiscal year, we are $191,781 under budget. $394,336 were spent on overtime in January. That was an increase of approximately $24,000 from the previous month, and more than $700,000 in bond payments were processed by our records division. Enclosure number two, community corrections and reentry services. The sanction center and transitional discharge center placed a total of 16 individuals in community corrections, saving a combined 66 bed days. Work release admitted 35 individuals and house arrest admitted 62. The reentry assistance program, or RAP, admitted 27 individuals and eight were referred to intensive outpatient treatment. Reentry services and therapeutic communities in the jail, there were 55 individuals admitted to therapeutic community housing units. Seven individuals were referred to intensive outpatient treatment and three individuals achieved a GED. Pretrial services, 292 individuals were placed on pretrial release. This is the third consecutive month for a record high of admissions to pretrial release. There are 1,117 individuals who were supervised over the course of the month on pretrial release. 504 of those participated in the 24/7 sobriety program and 158 were supervised via GPS monitors, saving 3,818 bed days. Theoretically, that saved Douglas County $458,160 in detention costs, and that should read January, not December. Law library tablet usage, the system continues to demonstrate increased access with cost efficiencies for the county. Deputy Director Amber Redmond and rehabilitative services administrator Justine Wall represented the Department of Corrections at our Commission on Accreditation hearings at the American Correctional Association Conference. The jail and community corrections were awarded accreditation for the following three years. I wish to commend Acting Captain of Compliance Chris Sweeney and all of our staff for a job well done. Enclosure number four, personnel. Five officers below the rank of sergeant, left employment in January, and one sergeant also retired. As of January 31st, we were 104% staffed among correctional officer ranks, and I want to point out that that includes those who were in the academy. That put us over the 100% mark. Our first academy of 2024 began on January 8th with 32 officers, and 30 officers did graduate on February 16th. Congratulations to Sergeant Matt Lewis, who retired after 25 years of service. Congratulations to Patricia Johnson and David Moss, who are celebrating 20 years of service to DCDC. Congratulations to Officer Joel Sharman and WellPath employee Nurse Emily Waltman on receiving a life-saving award. Several officers were commended for other meritorious service, and I want to congratulate Ruth Stuks, who was promoted to the rank of sergeant. Enclosure number five, our population. There were 1,172 admissions, 1,182 releases. Our high count was 1,085 and our low count was 1,024. Our average daily population was 1,052, a small decrease of 3. There were 112 custodial sanctioned bed days. That is an increase. The US marshal population decreased. The felony pretrial population was 772. The average daily misdemeanor pretrial population was 104. Probation violations remain stable. 18% of our population was between the ages of 18 and 24. 66% of our population were minorities. 15% of our population were female, and 18% of our population were homeless or near homeless. Enclosure number six, medical. There were 996 intake screenings and there were 443 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 23 times for emergent medical care. Six of those were by 911. There were three hospital admissions, which resulted in 25 days of hospitalization, and there were 53 off-site medical appointments. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There were 144 initial psychiatric assessments and 462 initial mental health assessments. 83 mental health infirmary placements, which are suicide precautions, and there were 157 individuals placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. There were four referrals to the Board of Mental Health and five placements at the Lincoln Regional Center. I do want to say the Lincoln Regional Center has actually improved a little bit recently in their efficiency of placing people. 46% of our population was diagnosed with a mental illness. And Commissioners, I noticed this morning you are missing enclosures number eight and nine from your report for some reason, but I promise you they exist and I'll email them to you. But I have the summaries of them for you in my report. Enclosure number eight, security operations and honor guard. Our crisis negotiation team, or CNT, had seven deployments. Three were in conjunction with our CERT team. Issues addressed including individuals who were refusing to attend court, an individual who had broken a plastic cup and was arming himself with the pieces, an individual who is refusing to leave our facility to be transferred to another, and an individual who had been refusing basic hygiene and was medically directed to shower. Nearly all of these situations were resolved without force and none resulted in injury. Our correctional emergency response and transport team, or CERT, was deployed nine times, including an ongoing deployment of a combative individual who required extensive medical care. Other deployments included high-security searches of housing units where potentially dangerous contraband was suspected to be present. Cell extractions, court attendance, and medically-directed hygiene were among the other issues they addressed. There were six searches of housing units conducted. Contraband recovered, included modified items for tattooing and substances suspected to be illicit drugs. The honor guard was not deployed in January. Enclosure number nine, staff development, wellness, and retention. 31 individuals were interviewed for correctional officer positions. There were 133 applications received. The National Institute of Corrections, actually already, trained our leadership team on Strategic Inmate Management, or SIM, in February. It is the latest iteration of training on managing inmate behavior developed by NIC. The entire department will be trained over the course of the next year. And Commissioners, this is a really game-changing process that we're going to go through. There are currently only about 10 jails in the country that have adopted the SIM model thus far, so we are on kind of the leading edge of this. We actually were scheduled to do this some time ago and then COVID kind of interrupted all of these trainings. The National Institute of Corrections brought six individuals to our county to train approximately 20 of us, and every single person at the department is obligated to go through the training over the course of the next year. And it really, SIM has a much bigger emphasis on just a more holistic approach, involving the correction officers in programming and treatment, and structured activities in the housing unit rather than more of just a supervision and observation model, which, you know, has kind of been traditional in corrections. So it is a big undertaking. I think this is the biggest transformational thing we're undertaking since we became accredited nearly 20 years ago for the first time. So more to come on that. 22 staff members utilized the wellness and retention office for the first time. 15 staff members were referred to the peer support team, and two staff members were referred to external mental health resources. Other noteworthy items, we are currently undergoing our strategic planning for 2024 and '25, and we have many goals to achieve. I wish to thank all of my staff for making 2023 a successful year and to the Board of Corrections and county administrations supporting our efforts to achieve our mission. The plan will be shared with the board when it is completed in the coming months. Goals will include, but not be limited to, implementation of the Strategic Inmate Management, or SIM, operating philosophy, negotiating a new labor agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Eight, selecting a vendor or vendors for our medical and mental health care for inmates, finalizing the design and breaking ground on our mental health addition. We want to maintain our staffing levels and we want to improve our staff wellness and retention. With that, I'll stand ready for any questions.
Thank you, Director Myers. Any questions from Commissioners? Otherwise, I'll ask the public. Any questions from the public?
Good morning. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I can hear myself very well. I can hear mine because I'm sitting there, but I can hear his voice from those speakers, but not from that speaker. And with my tax dollars, I would think by now you could have fixed the system. But anyway, I would like to know, Mike, if there's any statistics on the number of people that have committed murders, been arrested and got released, or violent crimes and got released and committed crimes again and have yet to be adjudicated? We didn't hear, I don't think that figure was in there. And maybe going back to, you know, maybe 50 years, because we have plaques out here for people that were hung outside of the jail, but not for people that were committed by criminals that were released. One of those people was Carly Rainwood. Some of the people involved in that have not been arrested. Some have been, had hearings, but some haven't even had their trial yet. And, you know, a taxpayer, I think, across this county and city would like to see our justice system work more efficiently for you folks. I don't know how we can expect the corrections department to handle everything, and there's so much confusion over what's who, you know, what is going to be released or not released, or tried or not released, and the judges keep putting the dates off. We want these crimes solved and we want these people locked up, not released to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners and Mr. Store, I don't have those exact statistics with me. However, I can tell you that very few, perhaps almost zero individuals who are accused of a murder are released pretrial. They usually have bonds set by the judge that are either, you know, high enough that they're, that almost no one can afford to pay them, or they're not granted a bond at all. And in terms of, you know, the efficiencies or the process of the justice system, every case is unique. Every case has its own twists and turns. There are a lot of issues, and those are dealt with by the courts. We provide, we are a servant to the courts as the Department of Corrections. We do what the courts ask us to, and whether that's hold someone, whether that's provide pretrial supervision in the community, or facilitate their treatment within our walls. All those decisions are driven by what happens in a courtroom, and we respond to those.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, that concludes our agenda for Board of Corrections. I'll take a motion for adjournment. Moved by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. We'll now commence the Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business is Item A, approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, and Item B, approval of claims submitted by payment process through Tuesday, February 27th, 2024. Do I have a motion, a second, for approval? Moved by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
We'll move on to our consent agenda, items A through N. Is there any comments? Oh, was it approved by Rogers?
I may have a question.
Yeah, we've, second by Morgan, and Commissioner Morgan, you have a question?
I was going to ask, maybe Mr. Myers may know the answer to this. The extension of the WellPath, I believe it's for six months, and I just wanted to, if you have it, know the percentage of increase for that six month versus, you know, the last six months or year, what a previous contract was.
And this is item L for anybody following along.
So, I don't know if I have that math in my head, Commissioner. What I can tell you is that there was an increase to do this per month. It wa, I believe there was a 6%.
6%?
Correct.
If you just email us.
I will.
That'd be appreciated and let us know that, which seems reasonable. And of course, I'm asking only because of what the legislature may decide to do.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, I'll get you all the details.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything else on the consent agenda or from anyone else? Otherwise, we'll vote. All right, please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next items are recognitions and proclamations. We have two today. One of them is Item 3A, Irish American Heritage Month. Our two Commissioners of Irish Heritage are not here today, so I will do the honor for them of reading the proclamation. It reads, whereas Irish American Heritage Month has been celebrated in the United States of America by Presidential Proclamation since 1991, and whereas Irish American Heritage Month culminates with St. Patrick's Day on March 17th, celebrating St. Patrick, the patron saints of Ireland, and the many significant contributions made by the Irish to our community, our state, our nation, and the world. And whereas on March 7th and 8th, 2024, the first annual Irish Film Festival will be held at the Benson Theater in Omaha, hosted by the Omaha Irish Cultural Center and the Government of Ireland, featuring first-run Irish and Irish-American films. And whereas on March 9th, 2024, the Ancient Order of Hibernians, Father Flanagan Division, will host the Omaha St. Patrick's Day Parade, the oldest and largest ethnic parade in Omaha. And whereas on March 16th, 2024, the Omaha Irish Cultural Center and the Government of Ireland will host the annual St. Patrick's Day Awards Brunch at Field Club of Omaha, honoring local Irish-American leaders in public service, education, and business in a celebration of our shared Irish heritage. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board does hereby proclaim March 2024 as Irish American Heritage Month in Douglas County, dated this day, the 27th of February, 2024. Do I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item B, which I will toss to my colleague, Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, my help is away from the, and her name's, Commissioner Borgeson's name's not showing up. All right. Well, Milford just came back in, so this is.
Thank you, sir. Whereas Women's History Month is a celebration of women's contributions to history, culture, and society, and has been observed annually in the month of March in the United States since 1987. And whereas the week of March 8th, which is International Women's Day, was selected as the focal point of this monthly observance. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the United States of America in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas the National Women's History Alliance, which spearheaded the movement for March being declared National Women's History Month, has announced the theme for 2024 as celebrating women who advance for equity, diversity, and inclusion. The theme recognizes women throughout the country who understand that for a positive future, we need to eliminate bias and discrimination entirely from our lives and institutions. And whereas women from every background have long realized that an uneven playing field will never bring equality or justice, many feel the critical need to speak up and work harder for fairness in our institutions and social interactions. And whereas during 2024, we recognize the example of women who are committed to embracing everyone and excluding no one in our common quest for freedom and opportunity. And whereas women have been leaders, not only in securing their rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolishment movement and emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and others, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history have been consistently overlooked and undervalued in literature, teaching, and study of American history. And whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force and establishing early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas women have also served our country courageously in the military and as elected officials. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes March as Women's History Month and continues to honor the many incredible achievements of women in Douglas County, Nebraska, and throughout the nation, dated this 27th day of February, 2024. And I move to approve.
Motion by Borgeson, second by Rogers. We have a comment?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I also appreciate one's history, but I object to diversity, equity, and inclusion. That is a term nationwide that is used under the umbrella of cultural Marxism written about by Mark Levin. Please get his book and read about it. This is not only Douglas County. This is all over it. That is a term that is being forced down our throat, our mind, every day, day in and day out. We are not a Marxist country.
Okay, Larry, keep it to the topic of the women's resolution, please.
We are not going to have special classes of special people.
The topic is the women's resolution.
And that's what diversity, equity, inclusion does.
All right, we're not talking about the women's resolution.
And you ask taxpayers to pay for a person that puts that into your resolutions. You don't even give us a copy of the revolution anymore.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right. Any other comments on the women's resolution? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Our next item is item four, presentations, specifically Item A, mentoring 360 program overview by Marissa Hattap.
Hello.
Good morning.
I'm going to bring this up. I'm talking. Okay, is that all right? I'm excited.
I'm excited to be before you all this morning to share with you about one of our diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives called Mentoring 360 that we launched last year. Yeah, so I'll just dive in. So as a quick reminder, I've been in my role for a little over two years already. And working collectively with our leaders, our directors, and our elected officials, several years ago, we developed these four different commitments. And so the commitments that we as leaders have made to the Douglas County employees and workforce is to intentionally build a strong, diverse, and competitive workforce, to innovatively create pathways to success by removing barriers and creating equitable opportunities for our employees, to invest strategically within our workforce, workplace, and community, and to advance a culture of inclusivity and belonging. And so as I dive into the results of our inaugural Mentoring 360 program, I thought it was important to start through this lens of understanding what we committed to and how it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and creating an environment where our employees can thrive. So really quickly, I want to start a program overview video that we created, and we'll dive in from there.
Mentoring 360 has had a significant impact on me and my mentees. I can tell you that in my seven years of working with the county, I have never been able to get with a group of people that I've never met from other departments, you know, other colleagues, if you will, just to talk and just to learn about each other and to talk about issues that we face as employees, but also, you know, how our work impacts the community.
Mentoring 360 is called 360 because they're able to be poured in from seasoned leaders, and then they're able to pour into one another as peers.
So as a commissioner, we're always looking at services that we could provide our employees that would better them in their careers. And so mentoring has been a huge one. And there's, you can bring in people, you can have them sit in a classroom to outside speakers, but what we found was mentors amongst your peers is amazing. They actually get to know their fellow employees.
I think when I look at the people that I've been able to mentor, I've been able to help them very practically by giving them advice on how to address workplace problems or issues that they might have, or even suggestions on how they might be able to be more impactful in their organization.
I think it helps develop and refine my leadership qualities. I've learned a lot throughout the process that helps me in my daily process of collaboration and coordination with my coworkers, but also people who are not on the same level that I am, so experiencing and expressing leadership.
What made me interested in joining the mentoring program was to establish some friendship circle outside of my own circle, small circle, so I decided to join this program.
To our mentors, thank you for your willingness and open-hearted commitment to investing in our development. Your generosity and sharing your expertise in professional journeys has been an inspiration for us all. Thank you for being just a call away.
All right, so I wanted to point our attention back to two of our goals. So towards the end of, if we're in 2024, 2022, you all approved a DEI action plan. And in the DEI action plan, one of our pillars was workforce development. And so this mentoring program is underneath that umbrella, and I wanted to remind us of what our goals were as far as the workforce development goal and then sub-goals underneath that. So our workforce development goal was to create a thriving and competitive body of employees who feel invested in and prepared to succeed within all departments. And so how we wanted to be able to create that is, goal number two underneath that pillar was to establish employee-led task force to support the development of activities that help to retain staff. And then goal number three, where all staff are aware of career pathways and have the opportunity to create individual development plans. And on the right, our statistics and data that I pulled from our employee engagement survey that we did towards the latter part of 2021. And so we developed one of our first ever employee-led task force that were, was tied to this program. Sorry, I'm having an issue advancing slides. Here we go. Okay, and then I'll go back. So an employee-led task force essentially is a group of employees throughout our ecosystem or our workforce that play an active role in helping to cultivate an initiative or a program. Our Mentoring 360 task force were made up of nine leaders in different departments who came together and partnered with me in developing our curriculum. So they helped me to choose our topics, they helped to create the infrastructure and our selection process as far as who was admitted into the program, and just played an active role in having a voice and a say in how this program was ruled out. And so these are our different leaders representing nine different departments as well. And so I want to briefly explain what the 360 approach is and the time commitment that our employees also committed to doing. And so the reason why Mentoring 360 is called 360 is because I curated different layers of development in our program. So initially, traditionally in a mentoring program specifically tied to workforce, there are your executive leaders who are pouring into anywhere between your frontline workers to managers and supervisors. That's important, but I also integrated peer-to-peer mentorship, where I created experiences where our employees were also able to play an active role in their leadership, because we are all leaders, and they were able to pour into one another, which is where the 360 came from. And so their time commitment was 90 minutes per month, and we expected them to attend up to 90% of the sessions. And the reason why is we had a lot of people who actually applied, and we were only able to accept so many. And so we thought it was really important for them to attend, and then also our mentors were carving out time out of their busy schedules to pour into them. And so that's why that expectation was there. And so overall, each of our participants committed anywhere between 14 to 15 hours of time between April of last year and December of this past year, I'm sorry. And collectively, we invested 715.5 hours into our workforce. Okay, so really quickly, I want to go over the topics that were discussed. Again, our task force helped us to create these topics, but so did the application process with our employees. They decided that they wanted to learn about how to leverage workplace relationships. We also integrated into those peer-to-peer workshops core competency, leadership competencies. And so servant leadership was one of them, strength-based leadership, and strategic leadership. The other topics that they met with, with their mentors were conflict management, constructive feedback, and difficult conversations, and social and emotional intelligence. So really quickly, here is a list of our 12 mentors from last year, and on the right side, you also see what departments created space for their employees to be invested in. And so each of these leaders on the left are either department directors or elected officials and represent a given department. Overall, we had 17 out of our 22 departments that committed to allowing their employees to participate in our inaugural program. Okay. Technology is not being my friend right now, but we're gonna get it together. So we had 66 mentees, we had 12 mentors, and 17 departments that participated. So of the 66 that were accepted into our program, I'm excited to share that 54 were retained, meaning they were not released from the program, which gave us an 83% retention rate. Some folks weren't able to graduate because of the attendance requirements that we had. So I was very pleased with the amount of employees that we were able to retain, and this picture is actually from our Mentoring 360 graduation that was held December 14th. So I would like to also go over the program budget. So including the Gallup Strength Finders, that was one of the core competencies, leadership competencies that I discussed, was strength-based leadership. And so with that, we allowed for all of our participants to take the Gallup Strength Finders assessment, and we brought in a Gallup Strength Finders coach who was able to help them navigate learning what their strengths were, what their domains, and how that impacts your leadership and interaction on teams. So we invested in the Strength Finders assessment, group seminar expenses, and speakers, so folks we brought in in the space that we held them. We partnered with UNO's Community Engagement Center, and that's where we had our group seminars. And then our graduation expenses totaled our budget to only $6,000 to be able to do this program. And so when we break it down to the amount of participants that went through our program, we invested just $90.10 per person. And so I was really intentional in ensuring that we kept our cost low and efficient so that we could look at the sustainability of the program and be able to continue this investment into our workforce. So I'd like to dive into some of the data that was collected that can demonstrate and communicate the impact of the program. So really quickly, I did want to highlight some of our mentee demographical information. So we had 89 people who applied for our inaugural, our inaugural program. Of the 89, 66 were accepted. Again, we had 12 mentors, and we also assessed how many years our employees were with the county. Sometimes there's a stigma associated with mentorship where we think that only younger or folks who are earlier in their careers want to be invested in and sometimes need to be invested in, and that's just a stigma, that's not true. And so when we look at the range of who showed up to apply for our program, it ranged anywhere between six months to 25 years with the county. And when you tally all that up, the median number was the average employee has been with the county 7.3 years. And then again, 17 departments were represented. We lost the video feed. Oh, okay. One second. Technology's the friend of me today. I know, right? Okay. Thank you. Okay, so again, here are the different topics, and when they went through their application process, these are the topics that our employees said that they wanted to learn about. If you can look in the, the left, folks wanted to learn about how to advance their career and constructive feedback and difficult conversations was two of the highest topics that our employees wanted to learn about. When we asked them, would they recommend this program to other employees after the completion of the program, 90% of our employees said yes, and only 10% said no. I think that's pretty good. And we, we got no maybe, so there was either a black and white, and primarily positive, so I'm excited about that. Excuse me. Which sessions did you find most helpful? So when we look at that list, the areas that they found the most helpful in their development was strength-based leadership and how to handle, give constructive feedback and handle difficult conversations, with servant leadership being third. And I do quickly want to highlight, I'm really grateful that we actually had three of our commissioners come to the Public Servant Leadership Seminar, which our employees were extremely grateful for. Many of them said they had never met you, they also said that they were, they heard themselves in some of your stories as you shared about the trajectory of your path into becoming a commissioner. And during the post-survey, they definitely shared that they wanted that to remain, and I agree. So thank you for coming and investing in our workforce. Okay, so I also asked our employees, did any of them receive promotions after being invested into, invested by our, our mentors in our program? And so of the folks who completed the survey, 20% of them said that they received a promotion after attending our program. So I think that's excellent, and I wanted to highlight one of the comments that were made. Some, one of our employees said, I enjoyed getting to learn more about myself and connect with other professionals in the county. Mentor 360 gave me the opportunity to further explore my strengths and really focus in on the traits that I would like to enhance in my professional and personal life. This helped me gain the confidence to apply for a new role within the county and landing it. So I'm really excited about that. And also, Ruth Stokes, did I say that right, Mike? Or Stokes? Stokes, I was right. Ruth Stokes, Mike highlighted one of his employees was promoted to sergeant, and she was one of our, one of our mentees. And she sent us an email after she met with Mike and found out the news and said that she really feels, feels like the support that she got from John Ewing, who was her mentor, and the competencies that she learned during our mentoring program helped influence her growth and being able to be promoted to sergeant. So I wanted to highlight that as well. So I would, I invited some folks to share testimonials today. Unfortunately, they weren't able to come in person, but we were able to capture a video testimonial from one of our participants, and so I would like to share that really quickly.
Hi, my name is Teresa Reed. I work for the Douglas County Assessor Register of Deeds. I participated in the Mentoring 360 program 2023. I was a mentee. I think participating in the program helped me to, it helped me value myself, see value in myself. It gave me the courage to do different things, to step outside of my comfort zone. My mentor was Leah, and in our sessions, we would talk about many different things. Leah would encourage us to feel free to talk about many things, and she also reminded us that we are valued. You can change the situation and the narrative and the position that you're already in. There were many activities that we did in the program over the time span. However, we did one in particular that really, really opened my eyes, and it was the animal assessment activity, and I realized that I wasn't the, I didn't have the personality that I thought I had, or the personality that people have told me that I had. So it was totally different. One of the biggest benefits that I experienced from this program was finding the courage to apply for a different position where I can explore my ideas, where I can learn. I never really cared to participate in group activities until this program. I felt very, very comfortable, and of course, Marissa would never let us be comfortable at your table. She made everybody split up and make you uncomfortable, but I'm really glad she did. I'm glad you did, because it was, it made me feel like you want to get to know other people. These people are just regular people, just like you are. And everybody in the program, I think, was probably a lot like myself, where you didn't know half of your Douglas County employees or, or the people that you work right next door to. But with this program, it allowed us to, to come together and get to know other people that you would have never otherwise known. For that, I'm very appreciative, very, very appreciative of that.
I'm very grateful that we were able to hear from Teresa Reed. And as she shared, she did apply for a different role within Douglas County and land it, and I still see that as a win. I don't know if the department director sees that as a win, but we were able to retain a really amazing employee, and she was able to learn about other career opportunities within our workforce that she would have never known about. A lot of our employees said they had no idea that there were so many departments because they were just focused on theirs, and so it helped them to expand their perspective and also increase their social capital, which is one of the foundations of our program. So really quickly, I did ask our participants, specifically the ones that were released from the program, what were barriers that kept them from being able to attend? And so some of them said that there were just scheduling issues. Other people said a lack of support from managers and supervisors, not carving out time for them to be able to go, and then family responsibilities. And so we did take that feedback and included the managers and supervisors more intentionally into the program rollout this year. We just had our second-year orientation last week, and we took their feedback and also changed some of the titles, I mean, sorry, some of the topics, like the Public Servant Leadership was one of the things they really wanted. And honestly, if I were to give us recommendations as far as steps moving forward, I would say we need to keep this program. I was really intentional about creating a, a program that was low cost, a low investment, but high impact for our employees. Our employees have communicated and demonstrated that this is something Our employees have communicated and demonstrated that this is something they want, not just in that survey, but in their overall participation in the program and their excitement around it. And we've been able to really capture real results that showcase and highlight their strengths and highlight how beneficial pouring and investing in our employees and our workforce can be, especially when it comes to retention, when it comes to proactively putting things in place that can ensure that we keep a competitive workforce for our future. When we look at our data, we can see that anywhere between five to 10 years from now, some of our departments are going to have a lot of folks retiring. And so it is vital and crucial that we can retain really powerful employees with that institutional knowledge and create space and investment in our managers and supervisors where they know how to steward new folks coming in so that they want to stay. And so I think that's the end of my presentation, and I would just like to open it up for any questions.
All right. Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Marissa. This, the positivity of this program reflects, I think, on the productivity of our employees. And so just from what has been said during the first year of this and the mentees' comments, I'm really excited about what the outcomes are. So thank you for your leadership, and thank all the mentors and the mentees for putting themselves out there to try something new and again, end up with positive results. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Likewise, I would echo those comments and just say that, you know, it seems like you built something from scratch that, in my opinion, was very successful and very intentional in different ways, and your different data points are very much appreciated for somebody who likes to see data points. So I appreciate all the surveys and reflections and all that. So it's just, you obviously put a lot of comprehensive thoughts and strategy behind that, so I really appreciate your effort.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Otherwise, we'll move on. Our next item of business is, oh, go ahead, Louis.
Louis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I agree with you, Mr. Chair, that some of those data points were interesting. I would have, for the presentation, I would like to have seen more detail about what they are. For example, emotional intelligence, that, I think that's important for high-stress jobs or when you're dealing with a variety of people, you need to assume a level of understanding for others. So when she said emotional intelligence and those other things that the program focuses on, what does that mean for the county employees? Because they're getting compensated well. That's one of the things that the board does intentionally, is pay the, your employees competitive wages. And also, that's one thing, but also, there might be, there's going to be a time where this program is, has run its course. I think that having this available to the community at large would be good for, for the community, because you're not, you don't do the, your services aren't for the employees. Your services are for the people that you represent, the taxpayers, those that live in Douglas County. So one thing that politics is dealing with is how do we make the people in power, the people with money, to understand their fellow man and to, you know, treat them well? So I think this is an opportunity. So when the program is all set and available publicly, that like employers can come in and look at the program, maybe use it, or even adapt it, adapt it so that employees outside of the Douglas County system can come in and participate. So those are just some of my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. We bought our first house here in 1971. We both worked for the telephone company in the early 70s, the big push for EEO, and I guess you could call it diversity training and all that. I remember it well. So this is kind of embarrassing that from 1971 to now, we as people have not followed our constitution, that we're all equal under the law, freedom of speech, et cetera, rights, et cetera. We still have this wheel that we're trying to reinvent, the public opinion. This reminds me, once again, of cultural Marxism. This country is in dire shape because this is a program trying to change everybody's mind. It reminds me of the Red Guard in the 70s, the Little Red Book, brainwashing. It is, shake your head, but do some homework on it. Read Mark Levin's book, and you might agree with me a little bit. We don't need this. I don't need to pay for this with my property taxes. If you guys haven't solved this problem since 1971, don't throw it down our throats again. You're reinventing a round wheel that's not going to be anything but round. Stop it.
Yes, go ahead.
Good morning, listeners. Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. I was one of the mentors for the program last year. It's a fantastic program. There were just lots of light bulbs going off. There were lots of folks who are really feeling empowered about the leaders of the county, spending time with them, and hearing what they had to say. There's a lot of really good, positive things coming out. It has nothing to do with diversity, equity, and inclusion, per se. Has everything to be, everything to do about treating people well, providing some additional incentives for our employees, and we're doing it as part of our regular job. We're passing on knowledge. We are passing on, yeah, just, it's knowledge and that experience. That helps the county provide better customer services for the taxpayers. So I appreciate the job that Marissa has done to get the program going, and I look forward to being part of it again this year. Thanks.
Thank you, and thanks for being a mentor. All right, now we'll move on. Item five, public hearings. We have two. The first, I will read here. We have a public hearing, item A, for class I 126204, license for Red Rock Canyon Grill, Omaha, LLC DBA Mahogany Prime Steakhouse, 225 North 145th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154, and manager application for Andrew D. Roy, 3114 South 107th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124. Is, I will open the public hearing for this item. Is there any comments or questions regarding this item? If not, I will close the public hearing, and I hear a motion by Commissioner Borgerson and second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next item under public hearings is item B, class I 126193, license for Charleston's Omaha Incorporated DBA Charleston's at 105th North, excuse me, 105 North 145th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154, and manager application for Thomas A. Cuzalla at 19430 Bell Brock Boulevard in Gretna, Nebraska, 68028. I will open the public hearing for this item, item B. Are there any comments or questions for item B? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and I have a motion for approval by Borgerson, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next, we'll move into our committee discussion slash action. Item 6A is finance committee with the budget report as presented, as well as the monthly fee report from the clerk's office as presented. We'll also move on, see if there's any other committee action. We have under G, human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented as well. With that being said, we do have a need for executive sessions for legislative, or excuse me, contract negotiations and legal advice are the two items for executive session. Motion to go into executive session by Borgerson, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
We will now be going into executive session for legal advice and contract negotiations. We will now be going into executive session for legal advice and contract negotiations.
Motion to reconvene adjourned by Commissioner Friend, second by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes five to zero. We're adjourned at ten thirty seven AM.